Okay, everybody. Welcome, everyone, to today's Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The date is December 16, 2021. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let us know. The meeting of the ZBA is being conducted remotely in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 112-857-236, and then you hit the pound sign. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide a real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue slash hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. We need a roll call to authorize this hybrid form of meeting.
James M. Upson, I approve of the format.
Bill?
William Grau, I approve the format.
Paul C. Simple, I approve of the format.
David R. Thompson, I approve.
Randy J. Partash, approve.
David H. Veitch, I approve.
And I'm David S. Nexton, I approve. I think I'm going to skip the procedural steps because we only have Mr. Ford today, and he knows them as well as I do. Before we have the first application, we want to congratulate Randy, who became a grandmother on, we think it's Tuesday, maybe it was Monday, Tuesday or Monday.
Fourteenth, yeah.
And she's got a beautiful little granddaughter by the name of Riley Beth.
Thank you.
I do believe Sarah's middle name is Beth. Is that true?
That's right.
Yeah, okay, so there we go. All right, anyway, that's great. Okay, Sarah, let's see. Application 21-087.
We have the minutes of December 2 to approve.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the minutes of December 2 as published.
Dave Veitch, seconds.
It's a roll call.
Buck approves.
I approve.
Dave Thompson approves.
And Dave Veitch approves.
And I approve. All right, let's try application 21-087.
Application number 21-087, Champlain Road Realty Trust, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, PO Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 275 Champlain Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12A Block 12, Lot 2. The applicant seeks to demolish the existing deck and beach access stairs and construct an observation platform and elevated stairway on an unimproved lot as allowed by special permit under footnote 3 of Appendix 2 of the Protective Bylaw. The lot contains 6.07 acres in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Order law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from November 18, 2021.
We want to welcome Mr. Ford. We have not seen you in quite a while. And for you new members, Mr. Ford is the continuation of the parade of moderators that we've had recently. We've had Chatham, we've had Orleans, and now we have Harwich. And speaking with Mr. Ford earlier, we think he might be in his 46th year of being moderator, something close to that.
Yes.
Anyway, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be back. I was commenting, Mr. Chairman, when I came in, that I hadn't been at a Board of Appeals meeting in Chatham, I think, in about two years now. So, a little deja vu here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming over. Appreciate it.
Am I permitted to pull the mask down when I present?
Yes, please.
Just for a few minutes? Thank you. So, I'm here this afternoon. Again, Mike Ford for the record. I'm representing Champlain Road Realty Trust. The trust is the owner of property at 275 Champlain Road. And the owners of the trust are the Stanier family. And the Staniers also own the lot next door, 225 Champlain Road, which is improved with a single-family home. Just a little bit of history. The family purchased in this trust, 275 Champlain Road, several years ago when it went on the market and was advertised as a good lot for a five-to-six lot subdivision, which at the time was not something that the Staniers wanted to see. And so they purchased the lot. And they haven't done anything with it since then. It was a defensive purchase, as they described it to me. And so they've kept it in open space. At some point, some member of the family may indeed build a home there. He has a couple of sons coming along, and one of them may do that. But they don't have any immediate plans for it. However, located on that lot is an old observation deck, I like to call it, which is right at the top of the coastal bank. And it sits astride what is an old retaining wall along the top of that coastal bank. The retaining wall is made of old railroad ties, creosote railroad ties. And there was a set of stairs that kind of brought you down the bank to the stage harbor and the marsh in front of stage harbor there. And the stairs are in complete disarray. I think, Sarah, I may have sent you over a picture that, for those who weren't able to get down on the beach and look back up at the property, you see the railroad ties have kind of fallen all along down the bank. They've washed out, and those stairs are no longer passable. You can see a chair at the top of the old observation deck that's on the retaining wall there. And so while they were having some landscape work done, they made a decision that they would replace both the stairs and the observation deck. And so, obviously, given where it is, a sensitive area, coastal bank, right on the harbor, obviously, the Conservation Commission was the first stop. And they've been to the Conservation Commission, and as of the last meeting, the commission looked favorably on the plan, and they've put it over for issuance of an order of conditions at their next work meeting. And so, why are we here? We're here because, under the Chatham zoning bylaw, the stairs being in the conservancy district that we want to replace requires a special permit. And the observation deck that's there, that sits astride the top of the coastal bank with some stairs in front of that, is all being removed. And a new observation platform is being constructed just out of the 0 to 50. That red line is the 50-foot buffer from the top of the coastal bank. Those are key resource areas, obviously, in conservation parlance, but they also show you where the conservancy district buffer ends here, too. And so the observation deck is really kind of out of your jurisdiction under the conservancy district. However, since this six-acre lot does not have a principal structure on it, and the observation deck is considered an accessory structure, it needs a special permit in order to be replaced because it is an accessory structure to the other Stanier property where they do have a single-family dwelling. But that takes a special permit under your bylaw to have an accessory structure on an adjoining lot. So we're here under both of those provisions, under your bylaw. We need a special permit in both instances. So that's the proposal. As I said, we went to the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission spent a great deal of time trying to ensure that when this work was done, the railroad ties, which are old creosote railroad ties, were removed. It was important to them that they be removed, and that the stairs that were proposed in that spot are elevated. And they wanted plantings, the beach grass plantings underneath the elevated stairs. They're on piles. Obviously, the stairs are set up, and the stairs are designed to have the proper elevation off of the ground so the beach grass can grow underneath. And the treads themselves are separated so that sunlight can get in per commission standards, and the beach grass can grow there. The other thing the Conservation Commission spent some time on was to ensure that in taking down the existing observation deck and building the new one out of the 0 to 50, even though it was out of the 0 to 50, they were still concerned what trees might be removed in order to build the additional observation deck. And so they required us to plant replacement trees for the couple that were taken down in that area in a sufficient number so the diameter of that number was equal to the diameter of the couple of trees that needed to be removed in order to put the deck there. So we went through all of that at Conservation, and I'm pleased to say that you should have some correspondence in your file indicating that they're now opposed to grant an order of conditions at their next work meeting. So, under the zoning bylaw, I've submitted some special permit findings from your bylaw. First, in terms of adequacy of size of the site. Again, this is a six-acre site. These are the only things on it. I think the site is certainly more than adequate in terms of the size of the platform that's, observation deck that's being constructed. It's similar and comparable to the one that's being removed as an accessory structure. So I'd suggest respectfully the site's adequate. Compatibility, the size of the structure with neighboring properties. This really doesn't have too much application here. This is more when you're constructing a house or in addition to a house, and the board's trying to match it up with the relative size and mass of houses in the neighborhood. So I'm not sure that it applies, but to the extent that it does, again, there are structures already there, and these are comparable to the ones that are being replaced. And they're being replaced in locations that are, at least in terms of the observation deck, outside the sensitive area of the conservancy district. There's no increase in any non-conforming nature here. Is there any nonconformity? Yeah, I guess the nonconformity is that this deck and stairs, well, not really the stairs because they haven't been able to use them, but the observation deck where the chair is at the top of the coastal bank, to the extent it's been used, is probably a nonconforming use because it would need a special permit because it doesn't have any principal structure on the site. So if there's some nonconformity there, that would be what it is. But there is no increase in nonconformity in any way in this proposal. Impact of scale, sighting, and mass on visual character. I don't think there is any. They've tried to design the stairs to be sensitive to the coastal bank, remove the railroad ties, and we don't think it'll interfere with anybody's view from the harbor back towards the property. I think the use is compatible. It'll be used for residential purposes as accessory to the main Stanier residence on the other site. I've marked as NA sewage disposal, drainage, traffic flow safety. I don't think there's a noise and litter problem, and there are adequate utilities for this particular project. So I'd ask that the board make a finding that these changes on the lot meet the spirit and intent of the conservancy district, and they're certainly not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists. And I believe you can issue a special permit, and we'd ask that you do so. Don Monroe, Mr. Chairman, from Coastal Engineering, is on the Zoom. If there was a question with respect to the plans, he was the designer in terms of putting that together, and I believe Don is there. And I believe...
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here, Mike.
Okay. Amazing what technology does. Don, and he's here. And I believe Mr. Stanier may also be on the line from his home in New York.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone in the audience, either here or out there in Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen now that Sarah can introduce you into the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
Then I will read the correspondence. This is from Nicole Smith. She writes, on December 14, "275 Champlain was approved by the Conservation Commission to go to the work session on January 5 to draft and approve an order of conditions." And that is the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience, either here or out there, that wishes to speak against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can introduce you into the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board, so we'll start with Buck.
Buck has no questions.
Bill?
Yeah, I was just curious. I didn't know that the same owner as the house and the lot when I was out there, but was that observation platform there when they bought the property? And was there a house on that property when they bought it as well?
No, it was a vacant lot, but the platform was there.
The platform was there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And was there some...
How old it is, we're not really sure, but it's been there quite a while.
Okay. And, I mean, so why are they doing... I'm just curious why they're doing this. I mean, do they not have access to the harbor down from the home where they live?
They do, but they found this as an opportunity to make use of this lot, which was a very serious investment for them when they purchased it a number of years ago. And they're still not at a point where they want to develop it with a single-family home. They felt rather than just get rid of that observation platform, it was a nice area in there, it would provide an area for them to go down and sit if they so chose and gave a beautiful view of the harbor from that spot from their house. So that's where they're coming from on it. And I think that when they saw the creosote railroad ties, they really wanted to get them out of there when they talked to their wetlands consultants and realized that was a good thing. And they thought while they were removing all of that, gee, why don't we just put a replacement platform? This is a beautiful spot. We could walk down and be able to see the harbor from there as well. So they plan to use it in conjunction with the main house.
And that platform location where it's being moved to wouldn't interfere with building a house on it?
Oh, not at all. It's, well, it's outside the 0 to 50.
Yeah.
It's in the 50 to 100, but this is a six-acre lot. There's four acres of upland up above the platform, all the way back up to the road. When they purchased this parcel, it was being advertised as a potential subdivision of five to six lots, which you could have gotten back then by putting a road in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but obviously, that hasn't happened.
Yeah, just to get a better understanding of where they're going on.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're entirely welcome.
Bill, the town records show that there was a house there, and it was demolished in 2008.
Yeah. And when did they buy it?
That's before they bought it.
Right.
Yeah. So when they bought it, there was no house there.
I have no questions.
Dave T.
Dave T. has no questions either.
Randy?
Randy has no questions.
Dave V.
Dave Veitch has no questions.
Okay. Paul?
Did Buck go?
Buck's come and gone.
All right. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
Hey, we need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes. Deliberations, let's start with Bill.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add or certainly see this as being substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And if voting, I think I would support it.
Paul?
Yes, I agree. I think it does meet our criteria for an accessory use for the abutting property located at 225 Champlain Road, and it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing access stairway, wood decking, and timber retaining wall and timber steps. Therefore, I would vote to approve when we vote for a special permit.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Simple.
As do I.
And I would add, it's a substantial improvement over what's on the ground now, so it's definitely better for all concerned.
Based on Mr. Ford's report, Conservation did a great job covering all the bases, and I would support it.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I don't think we need any conditions on this.
Agreed. Dave Veitch seconds.
Okay, it takes a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave votes yes.
Dave V.
Dave Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote, Mr. Ford. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Application number 21-091, Goodrich Chatham Realty Trust, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, PO Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 110 Old Saltworks Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 13M Block 8, Lot C25. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 20-082, granted on January 14, 2021, which allowed for an alternate location of the exterior mechanical system appliances, AC condensers, and generator with floodproof enclosure and the installation of fencing. The applicant now seeks to install fencing, a gate, and a beach access path with seasonal rollout walkway. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required. The property contains 57,960 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Order law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Mike Ford, I'm here on behalf of Goodrich Chatham Realty Trust, the owners of 110 Old Saltworks Road. I have been before this board on this property a number of times, and this is finishing out what has been a redevelopment of this
what has been a redevelopment of this site. As Sarah Redwin, we were last here, it was to give some relief with respect to generator and some condensers that found that were in the flood plain and we moved out of the V-zone and some fencing. We're now back to replace the section of fence that abuts the dune, so to the south of the house as you're out on the water near Bassing Harbor, and to allow a gate in that location where that fence is. So this isn't new fencing. The fencing that was approved last time was fencing that had six inches between the slats as opposed to six inches underneath the slats, which is what Conservation generally likes. Conservation had given us a nod with that the previous time because of dogs that the owners had, and they were looking not to have them go under the fence and get into the dune. Apparently, that's been resolved for whatever reason, and they're now proposing to change that fence to the customary six-inch gap underneath that Conservation likes for small critters to be able to move back and forth in the area of the dune. So that's one thing. Second thing is, with respect to foot traffic, rather than have people coming out of the fence and then walking anywhere on that dune, the commission has allowed a three-foot path with a rollout map that you kind of roll out within the path to allow walking through the dune down onto the beach and the forebeach to get to the water. We're here because in the conservancy district, a footpath and a fence also trigger zoning review and this board and a special permit. The criteria is pretty similar to the criteria before the Conservation Commission. Again, the Conservation Commission viewed this as all positive rather than walking in different areas of the dune. They wanted to channel it into that one path, wanted to have the rollout, so kind of keep people there if they could, and bring the front fence with the six inches underneath into conformity with their standard guidelines for wildlife habitat. So that's the project, fairly minor thing, but triggered zoning relief nonetheless. Where we have an existing special permit, where you people reviewed fencing around this site previously, together with moving a generator and raising up some condensers, we thought modifying that made sense because a portion of this fence was addressed in that prior special permit. Sean Riley, I believe, of Coastal Engineering is on the Zoom in the event there's a question regarding the plan.
Yes, I am, Michael.
All right. Amazing how that can happen.
That's it.
That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman. Happy to try and take questions, or if there's a question for Sean, he's happy to field one as well.
Okay. Let me ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application to please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you.
There's no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
Then I'll read the correspondence. This again is from Nicole Smith. She writes, "On December 14th, 110 Old Saltworks was approved, and the amended permit has been issued." That's it. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against this application, has a specific question? If so, please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you.
There's no one in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay. So we'll have questions from the board. Paul.
I have no questions.
Dave T.
Dave T. has no questions.
Randy.
No questions.
Dave V.
Dave Vich has no questions.
Buck.
Buck has no questions.
Bill.
No questions.
Okay. All right.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Vich seconds.
That takes a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Vich votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Deliberations, we'll start with Dave T.
It seems logical. I like the idea of a rollout device that you can put on top of the sand. That's a pretty good idea. I have no objections. There's been a fence on that property for the last 50 years. I'd vote in favor of it.
Randy.
I would adopt the findings of Attorney Ford, and if I were voting, I'd vote in favor.
Yeah, it meets all of our criteria. The fence will be improved in appearance by quite a bit, I think, and having the rollout instead of walking in the sand, I think is fine. I have no problem with that, so I will be in favor.
Buck.
Once again, I appreciate Mr. Ford's relying to us, how Conservation addressed it, and I would support it.
Bill.
And if voting, I would support it as well.
Paul.
I would agree. I think these changes are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing fencing, and meets both the general purpose and intent of the bylaw and the purposes stated for the conservancy districts as set forth in the bylaw.
Motion.
I'll move to close the hearing. Now, wait a minute, we've done that. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Vich seconds.
Takes a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Vich votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Mr. Ford.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members, good to see you all again.
Yes.
And I would have said that even if the votes had gone another way.
Happy holidays. Thank you all.
Okay. Next order of business is the report from the nomination committee, which consisted of Dave T. and Dave V. Gentlemen.
Well, I've been instructed to give our report, and in deference to the tremendous job that the existing officers are doing, we would put forth the slate of officers being proposed for Chair Dave Nixon, for Vice Chair Paul Semple, and for Clerk Buck Upson.
Okay. Other nominations from the regular members. Buck, would you care to present a different slate?
No, Mr. Chair.
Paul, would you care to present a different slate?
No, I have no other candidates.
Well, I think I will. I think I'm going to make them both chairman. What do you think? Oh, that's right. Anyway, okay. So if you could make a formal recommendation and second it, please?
So I would formally recommend that the nominations, as I just said, would be, I formally make those nominations.
I second this.
Okay. And these would be starting on January 1st and last for the entire calendar year through December 31st of 2020, '22. Yeah, right. Okay. So we need a vote. Buck?
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave T., yes.
Dave Vich votes yes.
And I vote yes. So thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for the support. At this time of the year, I typically thank a number of people because this board does not run by itself. In fact, it would have real trouble doing that for any number of reasons. And I want to start by thanking the two gentlemen in the Channel 18 booth. They have, for two years now, been able to produce this through Microsoft Teams and all that with hardly a single glitch. I mean, I think that they have done an unbelievable job with the changes that they were faced with here, the business about everybody from home and all that. So I would like to formally thank our executive producer, that is Mark Van Bork, and our producer, Dallas Heller. Gentlemen, thank you for a heck of a job. Thank you very much. Also, Chantel, Chantel Kilkeny, she does all kinds of things upstairs. You probably wonder every day when you come in just what you're supposed to do. I don't know, but if I was in your shoes, I would. As far as we're concerned, you do the minutes, and I don't know how you do it because once in a while, there's a member that waxes on for a long time on a subject. I'm not going to name anybody, and there might be three or four candidates, including myself in that, so you do a great job. So thank you very much, Chantel. Also, I know you helped Sarah and some of the other things, so it's not just that one thing. And I should say that Chantel is a lifer, and a lifer to me is somebody that was born here and is still here. And Mr. Thompson fits that description also. So the two of them share a certain affinity about they never escaped, or they realize what a good deal it was to stay. I don't know. We'd have to ask you later on that, on square. Next, I'd like to thank our COO, and that, she's called the Director, but she's the Chief Executive, not the Executive Officer, she's the Chief Operating Officer of the Department of Community Development, and that is Katie Donovan. Katie, I think, does a heck of a job. She's a very smart gal. If you talked to her about anything to do with zoning or town government, her experience in the city of Worcester is very different than what she's had here, but it certainly stood her in good standing so that when she came down here, I think she came down as planning, right? Wasn't she? Yeah, that's right. She was the chief planner, what Ally does now. Yeah, okay. At any rate, but the thing that presses me most about Katie is not only does she run a great ship, but I think that the employees that work for her actually like her. And I've got that impression, and that's not always been true in the past. And that's, you can have somebody who is a good executive but is universally disliked, and I don't think we have that here. So thank you, Katie. Jay Briggs, who has a very strange title of Building Commissioner, that doesn't even start to tell us what he does, but we are so lucky to have Jay. Jay, you know, I know you've had offers to disappear and go to a bigger and better, and you're still with us, and thank you so much. Jay has the ability to be fair and present both sides of the coin. There's no gray area with Jay, and I love that, and nothing is de minimis, and I really love that. So Jay, you do a fantastic job. Don't listen to the phone when it rings and says, "Hey, Jay, what are you doing the next three years? You're going to be right here." So thank you very much. And that leads me to the lady on my right. She hates it when I do this. She doesn't like to be complimented. She says, "Look, I'm just doing my job." No, you're not. You're doing way beyond your job. And I'm just going to say, "Fantastic." Okay? And I'm going to leave it at that. That's the kind of job I do. So thank you so much. And my fellow members, you know, we are a panel of distinguished citizens. Now, no one's ever said that to me, but I like to say that, so can we roll with that? Is that right? Distinguished citizens, maybe we'll get a badge or something like that, but I like to thank this board does a darn good job. And thank you for your support over there and going forward. So to our audience out there, whether you're celebrating Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever it might be, enjoy yourself, and in the new year, make 2022 a great year, and thank you all. And with that, oh, yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, you're probably aware the town has close to 50 committees, and I'd like to recognize you as the best chair.
Oh, well, thank you, Buck.
And your word's fantastic.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to be like you with Sarah. I'm going to get embarrassed. So, okay. Well, I think it's time we finished this and went on to a bigger and better thing. So Paul?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Buck votes yes.
Paul.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave T., yes.
Randy, yes.
Dave Vich votes yes.
I vote yes, and the time is, Sarah?
We are officially adjourned at 4:37 PM.
Thank you all.